Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to this regular meeting of the Kingman City Council on Tuesday, July 6, 2021, at 5:00 PM. Could we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Miles.
Present.
Councilmember Mello.
Here.
I am so sorry, Vice Mayor Watkins.
Here.
Councilmember Nelson is excused this evening. Councilmembers Emily.
I'm here.
Councilmember Scott Staley.
Present.
Councilmember Walker.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Could we please stand? The invocation this evening would be by Ron Russell on behalf of the Kingman Freethinkers and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. It's such a privilege to be here as a guest of Kingman Freethinkers in honors of my late friend Mark Niski. Mark hoped for a long time to deliver an invocation at this council and even became ordained as a humanist celebrant in order to pursue it. Since the tragedy of his passing to COVID last year, the bittersweet honor of opening this meeting in his memory has passed to me. Rather than closing our eyes or bowing our heads, it is customary in a humanist invocation to keep one's eyes open. Look around at your neighbors, your colleagues, your fellow human beings. Humanists have no holy books, only the literature and philosophy of humans who have gone before, whose ideas stand or fall on their own merit. My reading for reflection today is from a favorite source of humanist inspiration, William James. Be not afraid of life. Believe that life is worth living and your belief will help create the fact. It is only by risking your person from one hour to another that you live at all. Your faith beforehand is in an uncertified result will make the result come true. Please join me in reflecting on this perspective. We have a raging pandemic upon us and an uncertain future ahead. We can only do what we believe is best individually to make lives worth living and together make a community worth living in. Thank you all.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business this evening is a call to the public. Those wishing to address the council should fill out request forms in advance. Action taken as a result. A public comments will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for consideration and decision at a later time. Comments from the public will be restricted to items not on the agenda with the exception of the consent agenda. And there will be no comments that advertise for a particular person or group, and comments are limited to no more than three minutes. This is a hybrid meeting, so we had the opportunity to register to call in or to submit comments, also to register here in person. Did we have any other requests for comment?
Mayor Miles, we do not have anybody that's registered to participate via Zoom, and no written comments were received ahead of time.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to those that are present. First person that would like to speak is Mike McAvoy. Please come to the council, introduce yourself and your city of residence.
Okay, I wrote everything else so I wouldn't get all confused. Please, uh, you, you mentioned, like, you talked about, you, 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 you. All right. I've gone through every step in the chain of command to resolve my issues in my Engel home. While living in this town only a year, I've heard stories that send shills through my body. Sitting at Cracker Barrel table next to me, people chatting about their fight with Engel home and hearing about who's in bed with who to protect Engel. Another day in time, some guy rewiring Mickey Mouse style, his 220-volt Engel didn't have wire as ordered. Unfortunately, I'm another victim of purchase of an Engel home. I've owned the home for almost a year. I'm certain you've heard of other individuals about their problems from Engel, and they were tossed to the side the same way our state representative lawmaker Regina Cobb did to me regarding my dog that has seizures. I have a large kraken all the way across my two-car garage floor from day one. Engel's concrete contractor on my home was C.L. Woodward. Woodward also poured outside parking slab. He was poured two to two and a half inches thick, and the excess was buried against the block wall at the back of my property. The landscaper's innovative drove over it, slab cracked off. Innovative stowworks and landscaping owner Kevin Wilkerson viewed the break and stated, "We'll replace it." It's a 10-by-14 section. Even though the pour was not consistent with a four-inch 2x4 pour, Kevin stepped up and eventually, when I stated I was ready, he poured and finished the job. I also added more work for his guys so he wouldn't be taking a total loss. Approximately three weeks ago, one of Kevin's workers accidentally backed through my block wall. This was about an eight-foot section and was repaired the next day. Kevin was also working in the yard next door to finish the landscape, Kevin himself. Kevin is the type of person that represents Kingman's best. Engel home's wired the incorrect 220-volt 50-amp circuit that Branson sold me. I decided on the most expensive because in interest of safety, and I wasn't certain what I'd be using the 220 for. The know-it-all electrician installed a three-wire 220, which is rarely used. He placed the quick disconnect inside my garage because the outside was already stuccoed, which is BS because the wiring was done before the stucco. The electrician needs to get a clue. There's a reason in place, reason they placed the disconnect near the unit. With regards to four-wire, if you need three-wire, all you do is wire nut then extra-neutral, and problem solved. My neighbor has a four-wire 50-amp 220 with a receptacle. With a receptacle, mine does not. Can I finish?
Thank you.
I got about four or five more lines.
I think we understand the issue. Thank you, Mr. McAvoy. Next person that signed up to speak is Stephen Robinson.
Mayor, city councilmen, staff. I noticed recently that you did two things. You approved a new budget for fiscal year 2022, and you approved impact fees. I have some questions about the budget first off and about the amount of revenues that have happened, have happened in the past couple, three years. First off, in the budget, nowhere for the first time in recent history did you state the cash balances of all the different funds, and I'm really focused on the general fund. And I'm concerned because according to looking at previous budgets and what you expected to have as a surplus this year, your fund balance for the general fund will be $30 million, which is more, over 100% of your gross expenditures. I'm talking about the general fund balance alone. In fact, in the, so I'm going to point out something. In 2019, your total revenues was $28.7 million. One year later, it was $33.4 million, and for the fiscal year we're about to finish, it's over $37 million. So there's been $9 million or a 30% increase in general fund revenues, and yet you're so broke you had to raise an impact fee, $2,100 per house. Now, maybe that's a diversification revenues that is warranted, but then it warrants reducing the amount of general fund revenues from other sources. The second thing I noticed, that the expenditures have gone up from 27 and 1/4 million to 33 million this last, in one fiscal year, and without this budget, the expenditures are either going to be lower than that and that you're going to have a little bit less. So I'm wondering why you had a $32 million expenditure in 2020 and after only a $28 million, you know, 4.7 million less the year before. The taxpayers are looking at these figures, and I believe government has a job to finish. And now you're wanting, you know, to do different things like roads. But if you have a $9 million increase in two years, that's 30% increase over two years ago, and you're saying you don't have enough revenues? That's not fair to the public. You better explain to the public why you did the impact fees. And in fact, my honest opinion is that you should consider, put it on the agenda for future to reconsider or to look at that, because if you have 300 to 500 homes a year that are built in this Kingman area, that's 600,000 to 1 million, and yet you've had a $9 million increase in revenues without the COVID money in two years. I think it's not a revenue problem, it's a spending problem that we have in our city. Thank you.
Okay. The next order of business is the consent agenda. All matters listed here are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion, and no separate discussion of these items. If that is desired, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Do any of the councilors want to remove any of the consent agenda items? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through M.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Staley.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. There is no old business, so we will move on to new business, and the first order of business is Resolution Number 5367, Airport Private Aircraft Storage Rate Approval. The Kingman Municipal Airport has completed an analysis of the current fees charged for private aircraft storage and has prepared a recommendation for minor adjustments to the airport fee structure. Of the three separate analyses completed, the proposed staff recommendation is for a minor rate adjustment and an annual rate adjustment based on the Consumer Price Index. Full details are attached, and staff recommends approval. Good evening, Mr. Husband.
Party greetings, Madam Mayor, member of the council. Thank you very kindly for the ability to come before you today. My phone was lined up just right. And slideshow, and, oh, I apologize. Once again, thank you very kindly, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It is my great pleasure and honor to be with you this evening, to share with you some information about our fee study that we've completed over the last couple of years, as well as our recommendation that has been recently published to the public for the very minor fee adjustments. So, this is a timeline. When I, when I was here two years ago, just after the city took over operation of the airport, I was asked to do a little bit of an informal study of the rates for hangars at other airports. So I took a look at the airports in the immediate market area, which I consider to be Lake Haverhill City, Laughlin-Bullet City Airport, and in Nevada, Nevada, the Boulder City Airport, and got the information on what they were charging for hangars. And then I also went to the Phoenix metro area and looked at a few airports down there that I was familiar with. It was easy for me to find the information. And then I did some analysis based on what, both an analysis of our rates with the immediate market and then with the expanded market, including the Phoenix metro area. And essentially, what we discovered was that our hangar rates were actually lower than those in the immediate market, that they were higher than some of those in the Phoenix market, and that when you put them, did a broad market study in comparison, that they were essentially in the, in the market range. So, then in 2020, the airport manager actually commissioned a study by consultant to do an analysis, more, a broader and more formal study, and they have, they provided their recommendations and analysis results in mid to late 2020. That recommendation actually called for an increase, the hangar rates are a little bit above the market study that they did, but they thought that it was within reason and didn't require any adjustment, and that we should consider, and I apologize, we should consider adjustment of our cover tie-down rates from 75 to, I believe was $125 a month, and then our open tie-down rates, I believe, from 25 to $75 a month. So that was the consultant study that was done. And then, beginning in 2020 and completed in 2021, the commission, members of the Airport Advisory Commission actually conducted their own study and analysis of airports around the state and provided a recommendation to us in 2021. And their recommendation actually called for a decrease in hangar fees. They did agree with some increase to the cover tie-downs, no increase to the open tie-downs, and a significant increase or decrease in the hangar rates to the tune of about $60,000 a year of airport revenue. So, all of those, and then also in 2020, I also updated the informal study that I did a couple of years ago just to make sure that it was still relevant to the current market conditions. And so, we have proposed a final staff recommendation based on all of this analysis, and then we went through the policies, you know, in a, in consideration and in accordance with the Arizona revised statute. We published a little over a month ago our study summary, as well as the proposed recommendations for fees. So, this, which is exactly, and of course, as you all know, there's much more detailed information in, that was submitted with the city council meeting packet for this evening. But this was the recommendation that we actually published, and it calls for essentially an increase of the covered tie-down fees, which will be about $1,200 a year. It's from 75 to $100, which we do believe is appropriate in the marketplace. And all three of the processes all suggested that we, many of our hangar leases have a 3% annual adjuster, and all of the analysis has actually recommended that we go to a CPI adjustment instead. So those are the recommendations for an increase, if you will, is covered tie-downs to go up to 75, from 75 to $100 per month, and then all other fees staying the same, and the implementation of a Consumer Price Index adjuster to replace the 3%, which we consider, you know, 3%, just to say 3% is 3%, sometimes can be considered a little arbitrary and capricious. The Consumer Price Index is based on the actual rate of inflation for, you know, our situation. All of the other fees remain the same, open tie-down fees remain the same, our executive hangars and T-hanger rates all remain as they currently are, which are consistent with the marketplace. I would also mention that we are full. Open tie-downs, no, but all of the covered tie-downs, we have a waitlist, and for the executive hangars, we have a waitlist, and for the, the T-hangers, we generally have a waitlist. So the market certainly is, appears to be working. In fact, we've had people that have come from Lake Haverhill City, for example, recently, who have moved their airplanes and rented the hangar from us, basically because they consider their rates were too high. So we do believe we are consistent with the market, and this is our recommendation as we published it, and I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have, and then I would thank you very much for the opportunity to come before you today, Madam Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you. Do any of the councilors have questions for Mr. Husband? Oh, you're getting off easy.
Wow. My ex-wife used to say, "Why do you talk so much?" And I said, "Well, because when I'm done talking, you shouldn't have any questions." The operative word here is "ex-wife."
Well, I guess my only question is, I assume that there's been a healthy discussion in regarding this within the commission and the airport management throughout this whole period?
Yes, very much so. There are several, this came up on the commission agenda several times in 2020 and 2021, and there's been lots of discussion. And they've submitted their recommendations, which are included in your packet as well.
Right, yes, yes, for the decreases and...
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Members of the council.
Manager Foggan? Go ahead, Councilor Staley.
My question is just about the annual increase. I, I have some reservations about just setting this up to where there would be an increase pending on that consumer rate index, and I'm wondering if this is something, is this something that the commission would be able to overview, get an overview on every year and make a recommendation based on also occupancy and just what the industry is doing in the area?
Yeah, so, I mean, there's, you know, as we run the airport, as we look at, you know, for instance, there's a capital project for covered tie-down space that, again, we will be, after that's constructed, looking at rates. I think a check-in, how we're doing on that is no issue for, for the team. We're happy to do it. As Joe said, you know, one of the things that, that we're always interested in, and when you set rates and you're looking at, at how much space do you have, I mean, that was part of the decision-making process to do the, the covered parking in the first places, you know, Joe and team say, "Hey, look, all the spaces are being rented." And so for us, having that be something that's looked on, looked at and reported on, I think that's easy for the airport manager to do annually, so...
Okay. And the commission?
To the commission.
And our commission looking at it just to make a rec, I mean, I would just hate to see, you know, inflation raising these rates, you know, over and over again, and then we start having a lot of occupancy issues, and then maybe we, the council isn't connected enough to see that there's a problem there, and would like to have that, have some kind of fail-safe that comes back and says, "Well, we need to stop raising these."
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and the only thing I would say is that we do believe that, that the fact that the rates have been increased at 3% annually for many, many years...
Right.
...wasn't necessarily the best approach. However, we also think that tying it to the Consumer Price Index, if there's an increase in the Consumer Price Index and therefore inflation, then the costs of operating the airport are higher and therefore, you know, there's a justification.
Sure.
So I think that, I think that in large part helps us manage through the marketplace and, you know, sort of evaluate. If there's not a Consumer Price Index adjustment, or if it's below, then there's no increase.
Right.
So, I hope that answered your question.
I guess I just, I don't want to see it be put on autopilot, and we're just increasing, and we're not kind of checking in with what's really happening in the industry or what's happening with, you know, occupancy and those kind of things, and that's why, like, the commission, just to be able to look at it and say, "This is a good idea, or this is a bad idea." That's why we, that's why we have it.
What I would offer to that, sorry, Joe, but what I'd offer to that is that the, the tendency, I think, has been over the years, in my experience, is to leave the pricing for whatever...
The same.
The same, and then go 10 years down the road and go, "Oh, my goodness, we haven't looked at it," and year 11, all of a sudden, you're jacking up the prices and everybody's upset. And I think this, the effort that we're making actually shines a light on it regularly that requires that conversation anyway. So, I mean, as much as, you know, you don't want to see, if you're a consumer, you don't want to see prices go up, at the same time, recognize that it costs more to provide that level of service, you know, albeit 1.7% or 2%, you know, or whatever, whatever that increase is, it does give you that opportunity to stop and, and do that look annually anyway. So this actually ends up giving us an opportunity to do that regularly, instead of going, "I wonder how the rates are," five or seven years down the road.
Yeah, we don't want that.
And Madam Mayor and Councilmember Staley, I would just say that my, my chosen industry, my vocation, is one that is not one that typically just sits and watches, and that we are always on the lookout for what's going on in our industry and in our marketplace. You know, their, their, the highest priority for any airport manager is to operate a safe and secure airport. The second highest priority is to make sure that the airport is sustainable and, you know, that it has adequate revenues and controls expenses. And then the third highest priority is to provide great customer service and create an airport that you want people to come to. So that's sort of how we do business. It's how I've done business, and I have the highest confidence in Mr. Breckenridge that that's how he will continue to do business, and I think he's a great example of our industry and the folks that are within it. So I appreciate that, you know, that we wouldn't want to just arbitrarily say, "Oh, we've got a adjustment and nobody's buying, but we'll just keep raising the prices." That, it's just not how we would or should operate the airport.
That's good. I, I think there's just still some hypersensitivity about what had happened at the airport in the past, and we want to just make sure that we're doing the best we can with it. That's why I ask.
I absolutely agree, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Scott Staley, that, and I think we've done a good job.
Oh, absolutely. I know you have.
Yeah, and I, and I think that we're very engaged with what's going on, and I realize that there may be a difference of opinion on, you know, how we should, that maybe we should lower the rates, but I, I think we have good dialogue and good relationships, you know, and that that's a healthy thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Madam Mayor, thank you, and, and I totally agree with Councilwoman Scott Staley. It shouldn't be on autopilot, and I know for years, and I have friends that are pilots, for years, there was a 3% increase. Now, I know it's been frozen for what, two or three years, ever since we took it over?
Two, I think.
So we haven't had those increases, but nevertheless, it was just automatic before, except for the shade hangars. The shade hanger, the shade, shades never had an increase, but I think it needs to be examined at least yearly or maybe every other year to reexamine and to review the rates, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We have a person signed up to speak to us, and so if there are no other questions at this point, I would ask Scott Brackett to come up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, council. It's been a while. I was one of them for the commission. I did a bit of a review to come to the conclusion that we needed to lower our prices. The 10 years previously that you've seen, the prices more than doubled, and when you look at applicable airports, and that gets to be a little bit of a choice on who you're going to choose, so my emphasis on where I came about was outside of metropolitan area with a large enough airport that corresponds to what we see in Kingman. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean they have an industrial park or anything similar to that, but the airports are going to be similar, and that's, that's how I came to my conclusion. It's, it's all in the packet. I probably omitted more data would be, than you would really want to see, but that was the short and sweet of it, the way I made it up. As we sit here, our airport has, I'm going to call it a luxury, in a lot of cases, there isn't that luxury, that we have a sustainable budget. there isn't that luxury, that we have a sustainable budget. Whether we increase to the, or stay the same or decrease, we have a sustainable budget beyond what we're seeing just due to the hangers. And the whole purpose of the review, that we, we started it actually before they put one out, but I kind of went and talked to different commission members and made the final input on a PowerPoint. What you see is the thought process going back to the transfer, that we want to have the new manager, Doug, be able to have a facility that he looks at, that he's competitive, and we can draw new people in from outside the area. That was the whole goal, similar to the rebranding that you, that the city underwent. This is the, one of the final items for the rebranding of the airport to make it competitive, more than competitive, in my book. And if we don't like it, it's not cast in stone. We could, we could go back with the price increase if all of a sudden we're, we're on a monetary fiscal basis that we can't support. But currently, we can, we should, and it's due to that rebranding and the repurpose of the airport and to attract people from the outside, outside entrepreneurs that may want to locate at the industrial park that have a plane. The goal is to draw them in. And to give Doug this chance, we could look at it for a year, two, but it can be reviewed. And nothing's cast in stone, and that's, that's the basis that I drew mine on. And if you have any questions, I'm open. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brackett. Uh, yeah, one more. Oh, Emma. Mr. M. Is he where?
Dean, I'm swaying.
Is he? Oh, he's signing in right now. I, now I see him. I was looking him in. Mr. Hansberger, would you like to comment? Mr. Hansberger, would you like to comment?
Yes, I would. When the previous city council, um, received the airport back, uh, one of the goals was to be more responsive to the needs of the aviation community, um, and make the Kingman Airport a place that other entities would want to come to. We currently have, uh, a good FBO, that's, uh, fixed base operators who can repair planes. We also have, uh, a designated repair station for composite, uh, parts on aircraft. We have a, uh, upholstery shop that can repair the upholstery, and we have a paint shop that can paint aircraft. To make it a complete repair location, we would need somebody that does sheet metal work. Uh, and there's darn few of those around. The nearest one I can think of that has any kind of a good reputation is in Greeley, Colorado. Uh, there is a facility in Las Vegas, uh, there's also one in the Phoenix area, but they don't draw near the work that the place in Greeley does. It would be nice if we could attract someone of that capacity, so we'd have a complete repair facility here at the Kingman Airport. One way you do that is by making it attractive financially for them. We started off back in, I think it was 2017 or 18, when the city got the airport back with about $2.5 million in the, uh, the airport fund. Over the course of the last two years, that has increased, and we now have about $2.7 million. So we've had an increase by 50,000 or, yeah, about 50,000 a year, which is not bad. That's, uh, pretty good. There's many city departments that would probably love to have that kind of a increase in their revenue, um, and some departments that probably don't break even. Uh, our airport has the potential of being a real jewel. We've got two runways, we can accommodate, um, reasonably large aircraft, uh, and so far, what we've done is store them.
Thank you, Mr. Hansberger.
Excuse me?
It's, uh, your time is up.
My time's up.
Yeah.
If you have any questions, I'll be glad to do my best to answer them.
Thank you.
I hope you'll consider what the commission has 100% voted for. Thank you.
Are there any quest, further questions or discussion regarding this? I, I have a question for Manager Foggan, maybe it's for you, maybe it's for Mr. Husband. My understanding is that the decrease in the fee structures that the commission has recommended would reduce income to the airport by 60,000 a year, about 60,000. How would that impact, uh, what, what line item, if you will, does that impact? How does that impact the operations?
So that's a direct, the rental for the airport, generated by the airport, is direct operating revenue for the airport. So that's basically the day-to-day operations of the airport is paid primarily, luckily, the airport has some different revenue streams, unlike the city that has few revenue streams, right? Um, but yeah, that, that day-to-day operating basically relies on that day-to-day revenue generation for rentals or rental property at the airport.
So this reserve that is being mentioned, that has the 2.7 million, is that, uh, a capital reserve or is that for other things that...
So the airport is, so the, all the money that we generate at the airport is designed to be used for capital projects and for operations. We've had, over the last, since May of 2018, when we took over, we've, we've sold some property. We've had good property sales, uh, that have contributed to, um, the reserves. Um, so it, it wouldn't say that it's being all made up, that reserves being made up by, by rental, um, collection. I mean, that rental collection is a piece to that. And, um, so basically, uh, you know, the, what Joe shared with you, about $58,000 reduction in operating revenue would, would basically take that, what you added to the reserves of 50,000 and actually decrea, there would be a decrease of $8,000 each year moving forward, based on that, based on the snapshot of the last couple of years.
Thank you. And everything is full, so it's, the demand is there even at these rates. So I think that, that's telling. Um, is there any further discussion regarding this item?
Well, I know, on the one hand, our commission wants to lower the prices, um, staff wants to raise it, of course. I'm proposing compromises, I, I tried to do. Um, and I like even numbers, too, you know, and so this, this 37 cents, 29 cents, so I would just jot it down real quick, keep the tie-downs at 25. Um, executive hangar is 55129, put it at 550. It's, it's, it's off a dollar 29. Same thing with the executive hangar, 35637, make it at 355. 275 for the D's hangars and then tie-downs. The tie-down, I mean, the covered tie-downs have not been increased for ages. I had a plane out there for three years, and there was never any increase on it. Um, and it's been probably a decade or more since that was ever increased. Probably bump that up to a hundred dollars, that's probably a fair price for that. But, in other words, compromising on both sides. And then in a year or two, let's reexamine, maybe just a year. Let's see what how, what demand is, is coming on it, you know, for it. I don't know. I'm just throwing that out there for an idea.
Um, Manager Foggan, I would have to have a little clarity on that.
Yeah, messing with the rates would require us, require you to table this, uh, for analysis of what it would ultimately cost the airport.
Okay.
Um, so if you, if you tinker with, with it, you're going, uh, uh, my suggestion is that you, you know what that, that outcome is, um, before you, you make a decision on it.
Right.
Well, we know it's going to be a little bit less in revenue, but I'm talking, I'm, I'm saying not very much. So as far as now projecting revenue, if the prices are increased, yes, it, it will affect that. I totally understand that.
It's up to you.
Thanks.
Um, well, another way to address this would be to go ahead and adopt the fees as presented, uh, other than the CPI, and have that look, return to council next year and see if that is the appropriate multiplier to add to the fees. That's just another way to address it potentially. Okay, uh, who is the airport liaison?
I am.
Oh, okay, well, you've had your say.
So I'm the wrong person to ask.
You've had your say, yeah.
I've had my say, Mayor, and, and I grew up around aviation, so, yeah.
Well, uh...
So I'm a little bit biased.
Yes, but your, uh, your adjustments result in what?
It, basically, it's going to...
Does it save us from having $60,000 lost on operating expenses?
Well, it's not, that increase, we're not going to see that increase. I know, I'm not sure as far as, because I don't have those numbers yet. I mean, I'd have to re-figure how many hangers are of each to figure out what that cost would be.
You wouldn't have a loss.
You wouldn't have the loss.
A slight reduction.
Right, there's going to be a slight loss, yes, there's going to be a slight loss. But see, the airport commission is proposing a lot larger decrease in revenue. And, and so I'm proposing something, anyway.
So the increase in revenue, just as a reminder, in Joe's report, he indicated that the increase in revenue with the current, with the new rates, if accepted, were, was $1,200. So...
$1,200 for the year?
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, that's, that's, uh, members of the council.
Joe, you'll need to go to the microphone.
Yeah. Madam Mayor, member of the council, yes, the $1,200 is based on the $25 increase to the covered tie-downs. All other rates stay the same.
They do.
Uh, and then to convert the 3% to, uh, the CPI, which, I mean, there's really no way to project that. I mean, I would essentially think that it would be something less, but we don't know that. This year's CPI is unusual. So, um, the only revenue increase that these fees represent that we could calculate is the $25 increase from 75 to 100 in the covered tie-downs. And let me comment a little bit on the, uh, the aviation, the, the airport fund. Um, that is the result of, of, yes, any retained revenues that we have from year to year, and also the land sales of which, as, as, uh, Manager Foggan had said, we've had a half a million dollars in the last, just in the three years since the airport has owned it. So we haven't seen significant appreciation of the, the fund. That fund guarantees the ability to continue to develop the airport. As an example, um, we, on our runway project that we just finished, it was about two point, two and a half million dollar project, our cost was 118,000. Um, we've got a taxiway B project that we're getting ready, that will probably cost us about 200,000 of our share of the money that we've, uh, agreed in our capital program to, uh, new cover tie-downs. That's, uh, several hundred thousand dollars directly out of the aviation fund. Um, there's, the, 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 the fact that some years our revenues exceed our expenses is not, it doesn't tell the whole story, uh, for the full operation development and finances of the airport. Some years, yes, we have a retained revenue, we have an excess, uh, revenues over expenses. Some years, like this year's, I don't think we're going to have that. There was maintenance that I would have liked to have done this year that we just didn't have the money and the budget for. We did some, we weren't able to do it all. And the fact that if we're looking at, so, I'm, I'm in the weeds and I apologize, uh, I hope I've answered your questions, um, but I also wanted to just comment on the bigger picture. We need to operate the airport in a sustainable way. We need to continue to grow the, the fund, because there's only a couple hundred dollar, a couple hundred acres left, less than a couple hundred acres left in the existing industrial park that helps us replenish that fund. And we don't know exactly when we'll be able to start receiving income off of the new land. So, I mean, as I mentioned, the second, my second highest priority as an airport manager and also Mr. Breckenridge is, is to operate an airport that is sustainable. And to decrease revenues when there's not clear, in my opinion, clear evidence in the marketplace, that doesn't make good financial sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Husband. Well, I, I tend to support Mr. Husband's position. And, uh, you know, 2.7 million might sound like a lot, but it, it can go quickly if there are major projects needed to be addressed or maintenance. So, uh, and the market is, it seems to be in high demand. I think we already have a jewel of an airport that just gets better and better. Uh, but I, I would agree with the staff. So I would entertain a motion to some impact here.
Well, Mr. Husband does make a compelling argument. And even though I, and so because of the fact that everything is basically staying the same, except, I think, so I would make a motion that we accept it the way it is, but as Councilwoman Staley mentioned, that we take out the CPI and that that be evaluated by, um, the airport manager. And we reexamine that, but I'm not sure, in a year, two years?
Two years.
What's the...
A year?
A year?
Eight years.
A year? Okay. Every year then. I make that motion.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to accept Resolution 5367 with the stipulation that the CPI index and its impact on the budget be, be reviewed every year. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay? Ayes have it. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Second order of business is consideration of a variance request to connect to sewer. Engineering 21-0030. Staff has received a request for a sewer variance from Randy and Susan Perry for a parcel located at 4025 North Adams Street. The parcel is currently vacant and is zoned agricultural residential in the county. Section 4.2G of the utility regulations requires the property to connect to the public sewer system when sewer is available. This property meets the criteria for a sewer extension. On May 27th, 2021, the municipal utilities commission voted 6-0 to deny the variance request. Staff recommends denial of the variance. Manager Foggan, do you have any further comments?
I believe that Eric Sparks is here to speak to this, so I'll turn the time over to him.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hello. I'm Eric Sparkman, Assistant City Engineer. Unfortunately for both of us, the city engineer is out of town, so you'll have to bear with me. Uh, so Mayor, you, you summarized the, the project in pretty good detail. The highlighted parcel is the property in question. It's just north of Gordon, which is outside the city limits, but within the city's water service boundary. As you indicated, um, any new development within our water service boundary that wishes to connect to the water system is also required to extend sewer, as long as the sewer is within 500 feet or less of the property. Powell Avenue to the south, uh, there's an existing 12-inch sewer main. Powell Avenue to the south, there's an existing 12-inch sewer main, and it's approximately 35 feet from the southeast corner of the property in question. So Engineering actually did a preliminary design. The sewer line can be extended, and it will serve a minimum of 30 connections to upstream properties. So staff recommends requiring the sewer extension and denying the sewer variance request.
Thank you, Mr. Sparkman. Any questions? Oh, go ahead, Counselor Walker.
This sewer extension would make the way for 30 new?
Potentially 30, that's at a minimum, it could be more. I actually stopped in Alice at Sierra Vista, the road to the north, but potentially it could extend even further.
Wow, okay, thank you.
I'll just add, there's a potential pinch point on the northern end of this property, but based on minimum slopes, the amount of cover can still be met. Once we get past that pinch point, we're good to go. You're welcome.
Vice Mayor, did you want?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Eric, can you explain the lines? So what are, what is, what are we proposing to this homeowner, this property owner, that they have to do?
So, this is a 12-inch sewer main.
Okay.
It's existing. The best option would, for them, would be to tap into the manhole.
And that's the green line, of course.
This is the green line on the south of Powell Avenue.
Okay.
It's hard to see on the map, but there is right-of-way, this is right-of-way of Adams, so no additional right-of-way dedication would be required. They would need to tap at the south, extend the line, the full frontage of their property, so it would go all the way to the north property.
Correct, okay. That's what I, that's what I was thinking, what normally when you have to do a water line or a sewer line, you have to extend it to the end of your property?
Yes, the full frontage.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Mr. Sparkman? If not, we have a request to speak from the property owner.
If I can figure it out again, I sure will. No, I got it.
This is Randy Perry.
First of all, with the airport thing, if all your hangars are full, build more. Real simple thing, it'll bring more revenue in.
We're going to.
All right, on my property, the problem is, if I tie into it right here, where they're showing, where they're showing right here, to tie into it right here, first of all, there's not a tap done there, I have to bring a company in from Vegas in order to do it, which costs me an extra $2,500 or $3,000, depending on the day. My property actually faces Adams Avenue, not Powell. It faces Adams, which is over here. I should be able to tie into this sewer, first off, and come into my property, instead of coming all the way down here and running it all the way this way. But that's not going to happen either. First of all, it's too cost prohibitive. We're talking $25,000 to $30,000 for me to run the sewer, tie in the tap, and run it all the way. For one toilet and a lavatory in a shop, it's not feasible. It's not feasible for that. I could put a septic tank in for $3,500, $4,000. It's not feasible for me to do that when it's 10 times the cost, all right, or even if it's eight times the cost. The thing is, I don't need the sewer. I'm not going to put the bathroom in there, I don't need the sewer, I just want water for irrigation. If I can't get the water, I'll put in a water hall. I can put a 2,500 gallon tank in, and the city doesn't get a dime. I'm asking for water, I'm willing to pay the $2,600 bucks to get the water and the $40 a month water bill, or whatever it is. But if I can't get it, I'm not paying all that money for a sewer for one bathroom and a toilet. It's not feasible. I mean, I could put a septic tank in for $3,500, $4,000, I'm a plumber. Not that hard for me to do. But to spend all that money to do that, it's just, it's not feasible, and I'm supposed to help out the city? Let the city run its own sewer. I shouldn't have to run it for them. All right, I mean, you know, I'm in the county. And for me to do that, I asked for the variance because I'd like to have the water, I'd like to be able to, you know, irrigate and, you know, wash some things off and put a few hoses down my building. But if not, I'll put a, I'll put a water hall, and the city doesn't get anything. I'm not paying that kind of money for the sewer. And then to make me to go, make me to come all the way from over here and do the tap that the city didn't do, or whoever did it before didn't do, instead of me coming over into here and doing it, and running there, which would be, it's still going to, upwards of 20 grand. It's just not feasible for that type of property.
Thank you, Mr. Perry. Any questions for Mr. Perry? Thank you. Who is the liaison to Muck?
I am.
Were you able to listen to their discussion regarding this?
Yeah, and he announced vote, they recommend denying this. They expect them to tap the sewer and extend it if they want water.
Thank you. Period, huh? Okay. Any other comments or discussion or questions regarding this issue? Then Counselor Walker, would you like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to deny the variance.
Do I have a second?
I'll sing it then.
We have a motion and a second to deny the variance for 4025 North Adams. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Next order of business is the department report, and this evening, our department report is a city code update.
Good evening, Counsel. I would like to say this is a momentous occasion. I have spent my entire career not creating a PowerPoint or doing a PowerPoint presentation, and thanks to the awesomeness of our city manager, I'm giving you a PowerPoint presentation.
You're welcome.
And I guess, if you can hit next slide, I'm letting Annie run it. This is just going to cover the past 18 months, just some of the updates that we've done, and then I'm going to have Amy jump in and talk about what we're working on in the future. Next slide. So during my first PowerPoint presentation, I thought I got to make it interesting, so I started looking for pictures. So I thought I'd entertain you on what pictures I could find in stock photos because you have so many important things to be doing. But these are stock photos listed with an attorney. Next. Attorneys, Where Love Is Broken. This is what I found in the stock photo pile. The next one. Very sad woman, apparently meeting an attorney. Then my favorite, very apropos for what we've been doing recently, and that would have been covering some of the stuff we had done at the last meeting. So enough with my bad jokes. I would like to just kind of cover, I'm not going to go over these, I just want to let you know, kind of, the things that we've jumped through these past 18 months, you know, the procurement code, that was a huge one that we had knocked out, looked at doing the term for the mayor that had to be approved by voters, didn't happen. But these are all things that my office has been working on. You'll see some numbering that are not consecutive, those are going to be some other departments that are making some modifications to zoning and whatnot that, well, we helped a little bit, that was mostly those departments. Next slide. And if you have any questions on any of these, just jump in. Like I say, I'm just trying to let you know what we've done. I think there's approximately 18 of these code updates that we've done. They can be anywhere from major changes to the code to just minor word changes, just trying to update what's going on. Next one, which I think is the last one. The most recent one that I think we did was update the board and commission members, membership requirements, and we're going to revisit that one again. With the zoning change, we renamed the Historic Preservation Commission, and I don't remember what we renamed it to. Historic, it doesn't matter, but it's in the code, so I have to update that. One of the things that we do when we're doing these updates is trying to work with the various departments to make sure that we deal with the stuff that they work on the ground, because when I'm in my ivory tower, I have no idea what the impacts are, so I always want to thank the various departments. Next slide represents my thoughts on Chief Cooper and Chief Rhodes. They're awesome, and I think these are some childhood photos of them. But they've been very helpful in the enforcement, in the creation and modification of these codes. We can't do anything in my office without the help of those folks and the other departments in the city. Unless you have any questions on what we've done, I'm going to let Amy take over what we're working on. It's not very exciting, mine wasn't very exciting, and I'm not fun.
You try.
I try.
All right, next slide. All right, so what I'm working on right now is Chapter 7 of the code. It's a pretty big chunk. It encompasses motor vehicles and traffic, morals, which is like obscenity, prostitution, things like that, public nuisances and property maintenance, which is going to be like, obviously the property, public nuisances, abatements, things like that, miscellaneous crimes, just kind of throws everything in there. There's also, I didn't list it on here because I'm not going to be changing anything, but there's a regulation of alarms section, which has to do with like alarms in the home, which I think you guys passed a couple of years back. So not going to be doing anything with that. And applicable to the time of year, the fireworks section, I'm not changing anything in there, I'm just changing, making a few changes with some of the wording. They refer to the fire chief as a fire marshal, and so I just wanted to bring that to what we actually use. Finally, it has the recreational marijuana in there, which obviously you guys just recently passed as well, and debated amendment to, so no changes there. All right, next. Yeah, like I said, one of the major parts of the Chapter 7 is motor vehicles and traffic. That has things like regulation of speed, driving, riding a bike in parks and things like that. What I've been doing is going through our system, seeing if we've actually prosecuted those cases in the last couple of years, talk to KPD, see if they're actually citing those cases, so we know if we need to leave those things in there. And then also looking at the Arizona revised statute to see if there's a counterpart, because we don't necessarily need it duplicated in our code. The biggest, and coming soon to a council meeting near you, the biggest thing that, one of the big things that I've been working on, also with Annie and with Jack from Public Works, is the special event permit section, and I actually think we're going to be planning to get that to you guys next meeting so that you can look at that. But Annie's been working on the application and all that, so that's a big thing. Also, in the motor vehicles and traffic, kind of thrown in there is our camping ordinance. This hasn't been cited for several years because there was a Ninth Circuit opinion that came out that essentially you can't criminalize homelessness. The court said that it was a violation of the Eighth Amendment because, which bars cruel and unusual punishment. I'm going to be, I set up a meeting, I know that there have been some cities in Arizona that have had, I don't want to say good luck, but have been able to address their homelessness problem, and one of these was Surprise. So I had looked at their statute, and pretty much what has to be done in order to cite someone with that, is that there has to be an available homeless shelter for them to go to, but then they choose not to go. And again, that's something that hasn't been prosecuted for several years, so it has to be brought up to that constitutional muster. Next. Article 3 is morals. Like I said, that's the prostitution and obscenity. I struck that out in its entirety. There were counterparts in the Arizona revised statute for all of the different prostitution ordinances that you could be charged under. And then the definition of obscenity in our code wasn't exactly wrong, but it wasn't precisely the Supreme Court definition, so that is cited in the Arizona revised statute, so it is encompassed and can be cited there. That quote, I know it when I see it. If anybody went to law school and paid attention for five minutes, they would know that that's a very famous quote from a case, concurring opinion by Justice Potter Stewart, when he was asked to describe essentially what obscenity was, he said, "I know it when I see it." All right, next. Next we have public nuisances and property maintenance. I met with neighborhood services, community development, and then the prosecutors from our office, because they're the ones that are actually dealing with those on a day-to-day basis. Again, we're not changing a whole lot there, we're combining some of the violations sections because they're kind of duplicative and they are essentially the same thing. Cleaning up some of the conflicting language, but other than that, not a whole lot. And then next. Miscellaneous crimes, again, I just went through and compared what was in there to Arizona revised statutes to see if it was duplicated. I also looked at, we have a section that pertains to the sale of Sudafed, you know, the regulations by the feds that they have there, we have to sign out and give your ID and everything like that, that's covered under the United States Code, so we don't necessarily need that. Also, I've been getting input, again, from KPD, the Kingman Police Department, just sending them a list, asking if they cite these things, and also from the Mojave County Attorney's Office, because, for instance, there's a, I believe it's disorderly, or discharging a firearm in city limits, and there is a direct Arizona counterpart, but it's a class 6 felony, whereas in our code, it's a class 1 misdemeanor. And I won't get into it, but you can drop that class 6 felony down to that class 1 misdemeanor, so I just talked about to them about that and see if they're okay with us leaving that in the code. And with that, that is all I have. Any questions?
Are there any questions? I like the way that you're inserting humor into legal matters. Or trial. Coming to a city council near you. Now, I want to thank you for the work that you're doing to update our codes. It's really needed, and it will refresh everything, and believe me, people look at our codes and try to figure out, you know, what's what and how to abide by them, so, thank you.
If we wait long enough, maybe a year or two, we'll just have to refer to state code for all of ours, since they're going to run cities, so.
Okay, well, I was going to ask that, but I decided discretion's the better part of valor, but you brought it up, so I do wonder how the state's new regulation of taking authority away from cities on certain policies, as well as what the council decides, but on policies and codes, I guess, how is that going to impact us?
Yeah, and just as a.
That's a question.
Yeah, no, it's problematic. It's something that, when you look at this state and you look at the legislature's actions this year, is really alarming, and we'll have, the Dorn Group will be here doing a legislative update at our next council meeting, and so coming to a council meeting.
Near you.
So that will be something that you will hear about, and then we also have a legislative update and priority setting coming up in October. Again, with conjunction with the league and our lobbyists, it will definitely be something that we need to be paying attention to. I say it somewhat in gist and somewhat in an alarming manner, but again, appreciate Carl and Amy for what they're doing to get us up to speed. Nothing like having something in our code that's been replaced by the feds, right? We always have to be paying attention to what we're doing and doing this more often. So this is Carl teasing a little bit about me asking to have this done, but this is something, as we move forward, that we hope is an ongoing thing for the council to get and feel comfortable that we're not, you know, you don't want to be in that news article where we have a law on the book that it's against the law to spit on the sidewalk, or, you know, whatever those weird, out-of-date laws are.
Right.
You know, you can spit on the street.
Because we could lose state shared revenue.
Right, well, that too.
And that would be bad, too. So, thank you. I think we really appreciate having those updates coming. And that will include, are we going to have discussion of the impact of the flat tax and the impact on our shared revenues? Will that be part of that?
Yeah, so when Mr. Dorn is here, we'll share that information as well.
Thank you. Okay, next will be announcements by Mayor, city council members, city manager. Limited to announcements, board and commission liaison reports, availability, attendance at conferences and seminars. Manager Foggan?
Yes, so I just want to remind everybody that our ribbon cutting at the golf course was moved due to a scheduling conflict, and so we're out one week. I've seen several of you accept that, which I appreciate your willingness to change your calendar on, but just want to make sure that that continues to be something that you're planning on. We'd love to have you. We're also, the city has been invited to a ribbon cutting for the Veterans Villa project that's on Walupi Mountain Road. Again, excited to be able to add that amenity for veterans to our community, so and I want to just say that really appreciate the council's support in the ribbon cuttings and the great news items that we've been able to celebrate, and there's a few more headed our way, so thank you for that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Manager Foggan. Counselor Walker, you're good. Counselor Staley. Counselor Mello.
I just wanted to let our community know that Mojave County has quite a bit of grant money available to renters that have suffered a hardship due to COVID-19, so they can help with rent and also their utilities. And if they're interested, they could contact Mojave Community Services at 928-753-0723, or you're more than welcome to contact me through the city, and I will help you with that. That's it.
Thank you so much. Counselor Samley?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I have nothing tonight, thank you.
Did I get everyone? Just mentioned that I attended the WACOG Executive Board, and again, thank them for the $3 million to help us on Eastern, which is forthcoming this year. And, but also wanted to inform you that Justin Henry, I think most of you know him, has left WACOG and has taken a job with like Havasu, with their transportation needs. And so it's a good move, but we'll miss him, because he's been a great partner as part of the WACOG family. Also, yesterday, I spoke to the Keeman Republican Women about a riveting subject, our budget. And I will tell you, it was well received, but it made me very aware that we have to be out there talking about our budget all the time, so that people understand, you know, how it's comprised, what the process is, how it is constructed, and how decisions are made about it. And then, of course, some of the highlights of the coming year. But they really appreciated, if you will, a primer on what goes into all the months of work, from strategic planning through the decisions of the council finally. So I appreciated the opportunity and look forward to continuing to speak about the budget. We did have a tri-city planning meeting, and just to let you know, to put on your calendars, that the tri-city council meeting will be on July 27th, and it will be on Zoom. So I think you'll be getting invitations to that, but this time it's all on Zoom. For what reason?
Due to the annual state city managers' conference. There's a lot with the summertime and vacations, a lot of schedule conflicts, so this works best for the cities.
Okay, so that will be, I think we have a really solid agenda for that, so it'll be worth attending. And finally, I would just mention that I attended the annual meeting of the chamber, where they induct their new officers, and they've got a great new board, and again, they appreciate working with the city, and we really value them as a partner. So it was good to see them all happy, and it was at Metcalf Park, so we had a nice evening at the park. I think that's it for me, and now I would move on to council requests for future reports and updates. I've already asked her. Thank you, though. Council requests, are there any council requests for future reports and updates? No. Okay, then let's move on to executive session. This is going to be on opioid litigation with Purdue Pharma bankruptcy. And the city attorney requests that the council go into executive session regarding our ongoing opioid litigation. Could I have a motion to go into executive session?
I move to go into executive session.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Let's go to executive session. Yay. Well, we are back from executive session, and I would entertain a motion regarding the opioid litigation.
Oh, I make a motion that we accept as discussed?
Okay, I think we have to make-
I thought we don't do that in here in executive session.
This part, we're going to say, we are going to- This part, we're going to say, we are going to direct the city attorney to cast a ballot supporting the opioid settlement with Purdue Pharma.
Okay. So stated, Mayor.
Do I have a second?
Second.
You have a motion, a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries unanimously, thank you. And now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, motion is second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.